Well, welcome everyone. How's everybody doing this morning? All right. My name is Ari Delay and I'm the Fire Chief here for the city of San Bruno. I wanted to welcome you here to San Bruno and our beautiful new Recreation and Aquatic Center. This has been open just shy of a year, right Jen? Yep, just shy of a year and it's something, it's a place we're very proud of here in San Bruno. It's a great spot for the community. This particular meeting is meant for San Bruno residents, but it's rent for all residents of the peninsula. So we want to thank everybody. I've met a few people from Burlingame and Milbrae and other communities throughout the peninsula. So I wanted to say thank you for being here. I want to bring up our mayor, Mayor Rico Medina. He should be here somewhere very close. Oh, there he is. All right. Mayor Medina is here. We have a couple of our council members, council member, or Vice Mayor Marty Medina is here. All right, Mayor, Councilmember Tom Hamilton, right in the back. And Councilmember Michael Salazar, right here in the front. And Mayor Medina is going to say a few words and do an introduction to Assemblymember Pappan for us as well. You're going to need it for the Zoom people.
Then I do need that. Good morning, everyone. And for those that have not been to the Recreation Aquatic Center, as Chief Delay said, it's been about a year since we've opened. And so, welcome all of you here to San Bruno. I have a unique privilege to introduce the assembly person. I did not know Diane and Gina. I met their parents first. I met her mom and her father. So I went, you know, when you said, can I really find it? I did find a couple of things. I received the John Pappan Memorial Scholarship. And this was handed to me when I was at Cappuccino by her mother. And so I have kept that. And it gave me a scholarship that put me through CSM, paid for its entirety by the John Pappan Memorial Scholarship. And then we might know that there's Lou Pappan, her father, who also was an assembly person. And he had given this to me when I left the city of San Bruno in the Parks and Recreation Department, which I still keep today. This was in 2000. So I have known the Pappan family for quite a while and been very privileged. Their parents have and have given a lot to our community and to assist others. And so, does it surprise me that here she follows in her father's footsteps? No. Gina and Diane have been friends to me, to the community personally, have stood by me, with me, and supported us in this town and this community. And so, I'm proud that she's our assembly person. This is who I walked for. This is who I voted for. And this is who I support full-heartedly. So it is my privilege to welcome you for our first time in the Recreation Aquatic Center and welcome you. And I will turn it over to you. And thank you for coming back from Sacramento, from the fights and the, I'm sure, little turmoil here and there. But we welcome you here and you have a friendly crowd.
Oh, my goodness. Did not expect that. Thank you, thank you Rico. Can you all hear me? If not, I have a very loud voice, so I never one to need a mic. Let me just put this coffee down somewhere that isn't hazardous. Oh, look at you, Chief. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Well, good morning, everyone. I'm so delighted to be with you. As Rico mentioned, this is very much like coming home. Well, we grew up in Milbrae, just next door. I did attend to Cappuccino High School. And so, obviously, a lot of my peers and friends lived in San Bruno. So I spent a lot of time in this park when I was younger. And I just want to say, first of all, congratulations on the new building. This is unbelievable. It is just so beautiful and so clever and using part of the old Jim Flores artwork to this beautiful tree line that you've captured. I just couldn't be more delighted for San Bruno. That is for darn sure. So you should give it up for yourselves. It's just amazing. Okay, well, let's talk fire and fire maps, shall we? I, first of all, fire is something that doesn't really discriminate. And so, the fact that you are all here and care enough to be concerned about it, I can't say enough about your ability to have foresight and the importance of your being here. So let me talk just a little bit about why we're here. So the state is working on its fire zone maps, which then will make it incumbent upon communities to take certain actions to become fire resilient. And so, those maps are sort of in their first iteration. So this is really going to be kind of a two-way thing. Not only are we going to inform the community about the maps, what they hold, what might be required. You're going to hear from some experts about that. But also, what do you want to see out of the maps? And what can you take back to the map makers, if you will? So it will be a two-way street here, that is for sure. So I thank you for being here, but we're also looking forward to some of your input. And the folks that are here are going to have tremendous expertise. So I hope that it ends up to be a very fruitful morning for all of us. My office is sort of sponsoring the event, but it is that we will hear from folks that are really well-versed in the subject matter. So as we all know, or we should know, wildfires are now significant and they pose a very consistent, I hate to use that word as it relates to fires, but a consistent risk for all of us. Destructive wildfires have not only devastated our landscape, but they've taken lives. They've destroyed homes and they've strained our resources. There's no question about that. So let's talk just a little bit about the escalating severity of wildfires. And I'm just going to mention some of the biggies right this second. In 2018, we had the Camp Fire, the deadliest fire in the state of California. We lost 85 people. That's inexcusable, inexcusable. 18,000 structures and it cost 16.5 billion. In 2017, just the year before that one, we had the Tubbs Fire in the Sonoma and Napa Counties. 22 people lost their lives. And of those, 22 lost their lives and 5,600 structures. And of course, the most immediate one in all of our minds were the LA Fires, where they had 11 deaths and 10,000 structures were destroyed. And I don't like to just use the word "structures." Those were people's homes. And it was devastating, absolutely devastating. So let me give you an idea of what we're talking about dollars-wise. We're talking about upwards of $57 billion, just in this state alone. So why are we here? Let's talk about a little bit about some of the contributing factors. Drought and heat. So I'm going to talk about each of those separately. From 2000 to 2022, so that's the first 22 years of this century, we've been in a mega drought. And when I say mega drought, it is, are you ready? The driest 22-period, 22-year period that we have had in at least 1,200 years. That's pretty frightening, pretty frightening. The drought was exacerbated by higher temperatures, leading to increased evaporation rates, which means what? We got dead trees and we got a lot of fuel. It's not a great combination and it's not getting any better. California has seen a rise in extreme heat events over the past two decades. These heat waves not only dry out our landscape, but they pose significant health risks. In California, the sixth warmest years, the six warmest years since 1895, all happened since 2014. That's some darn hot stuff. And 2020 was tied as the warmest year on record. From 2015 to 2020, we saw the highest number of extremely hot days. And notably, 2024 was declared the hottest year on record globally. And California has experienced some of the hottest temperatures over recorded history, including Death Valley, which has the record in 2024 of 130 degrees. As a consequence, wildfires are continuing to get worse and be something that we'll all struggle with. But we're working to respond. So I want to talk just a little bit, if I could, of some of the things that are being done to help us try to cope with what we're confronted with, which is the dryness and the heat. And you know, I just want to add one comment about heat. It can be so intolerable. And I think about kids that have to play on schoolyards. So that's becoming a very big deal. How do we keep our schoolyards cooler? But also, we're seeing that rec centers like this and libraries are being used as cooling centers for seniors and adults during the day. My home doesn't have air conditioning and you can be sure I've gone down to the library when the going gets rough. So your community is here for you and in this center, I'm sure, will be used by some of us. Because I know most of the homes in San Bruno and Milbrae don't have, I live in San Mateo, but same thing. There's not much air conditioning around. Heat pumps, which is a new way of heating your home, they do provide a cooling mechanism. And as we get into more heat pumps, we might, at least in our own homes, see that. But for now, we are counting on communities to help us keep cool, as it were. So allow me, being your state Assemblymember, by the way, my district runs from Brisbane to East Palo Alto, all on the east side of the peninsula. And each Assemblymember represents 500,000 people. So you are my peeps and I am so honored to represent you in Sacramento. So if I may just take a moment to tell you just a little bit about what's being done in Sacramento, and then we're going to go to the rest of the program. We do have a member of the, a representative from the Department of Insurance, who has a hard stop at 11:00. And I want to make sure that she gets in all of her information. And usually, the Department of Insurance is very knowledgeable, so I want to make sure she gets enough time. So let me just quickly, if I may, run through some of what the state is doing to either help us prevent, or if they do happen, mitigate the effects of wildfire and respond to them. Because you know, if you've got a plan in place for rebuilding, your ability to get funding after an event, it goes a lot smoother if you've got plans in place. So let me just talk a little bit. First, we've got Forest Management. The state's goal is a 1 million acre annual restoration target by 2025. Oh, we're there, 2025. Let's see how it goes this year. Including mechanical thinning and prescribed fire burns. You have to do sunburning. But you do it on the right day, you're going to be safer in the long run. Streamlining permitting. That's right, government becoming more efficient. There you have it. But the state does have a new online process, which streamlines approval for forest and vegetation management projects, which hopefully reduces the review times and bureaucratic hurdles. Part and parcel of this is that the governor on March 1 already declared a state of emergency so that we can fast-track critical projects for communities that are vulnerable to wildfire. I actually like that he's proactively done this. So the emergency proclamation will also cut bureaucratic red tape, including suspending SEQA and the Coastal Act. So this slowing down critical forest man, so we don't slow down critical forest management. We also have expanded aerial firefighting. I don't know if you saw in the news, the governor just received yet a second Big C 130 plane, which will help us fight fires. And he'd been working on that with Diane Feinstein for years. So it was real coup to finally get the plane available for us to use. There's also an inter-agency treatment dashboard the state has launched, which will track completed vegetation management projects and facilitate further planning. It's all about planning. We also have utility management plans. As we know, utilities play a big part. I don't have to tell San Bruno that, in how we manage things. So utilities are now required to do their own wildfire mitigation plans. They submit them to the Office of Energy Infrastructure Safety here in California. And those plans are reviewed and approved and they are approved with quite a bit of scrutiny. Finally, we have fire hazard zones, which is what we're here to talk about today. And these maps that are coming out will tell us where we have the greatest fire hazards. And there will be obviously mitigation factors that communities will work together with, or will work together and collaboratively try to meet the requirements of being in these high-fire zones. And I appreciate the maps that are along the way, along the sides here. If you haven't had a chance to look at them, please do, because it lets us know what we're dealing with in every city here on the peninsula. So like you in attendance, I'm looking forward to hearing from our various panelists so that we can all work collaboratively to prevent. And if we can't quite prevent, to respond and to recover from wildfires. Without further ado, I'll bring it back to the chief, who can get our panelists going. Thank you for having me and I'm going to learn as much as you do, I promise.
Thank you so much. All right, great. I just want to also recognize Councilmember Sandy Alvarez, who's just joined us this morning from the city of San Bruno. Thank you for being here, Sandy. And I want to introduce a couple of our panelists. I have Brian Olson from Cal Fire in the back of the room with his team from the Land Use and Planning Department of Cal Fire. We'll have online Lisa Strange from the California Department of Insurance. Denise Ania, who's the Executive Director with the San Mateo County Fire Safe Council over in the corner in the green jacket, with Don Bullard, her cohort on the side there. We have Joel from the United Policy Holders Group is in the back of the room there. And we have a few of the Fire Marshals and Deputy Fire Marshals. We have San Mateo Consolidated, Melinda Martin, I've only known her for a million years, from San Mateo Consolidated. And who else do we have here? All right. All right. And then we have a couple of our inspectors here. Fantastic. Thank you. You want to come up and introduce yourself? So we have some representation from across the peninsula, from different departments, to be able to make sure that not only San Bruno residents, but residents across the peninsula have the opportunity to see this presentation and ask questions. I'm going to go ahead and screen share here. So our agenda for the day is just to go over some objectives for the day, which I'll go over briefly. Go over a quick background of how we got here and how this meeting kind of came about. We'll work on our presentations. And then the plan is to do a Q and A session at the very end with all the speakers. The only one that we're going to try to do a little bit of question and answer with is the California Department of Insurance. She's going to be online. She has a hard stop at 11 o'clock. So I want to make sure we try to be respectful of her time. Okay, the other one important safety thing is we have a demonstration for what we call a SIM table. And this just is an example of some of the tools that firefighters use to train for wildfire that we use on a fairly consistent basis in the peninsula and other departments across the nation use this. But you'll be able to take a look at this SIM table in the back corner of the room. But it uses walnut shells. So if anybody has a severe walnut allergy, probably stay away from that northwest corner of the room, if you could, please. All right. So our objective, first objective is to inform the community. We want to share some updates on the new fire hazard severity zones in our, what we call LRA, or Local Responsibility Area. It's a term that most citizens don't really often get exposed to. But as firefighters, it's something we talk about all the time, is LRA, or Local Responsibility Areas. And importantly, and Brian's going to take it with his team, is to explain the difference between hazard and risk. And that's an important distinction that they'll make in their presentation. The second objective is to discuss some safety measures. We're going to talk about some preventative actions that you can take as homeowners, such as defensible space and home hardening, to protect your homes and your property. And third, we want to clarify responsibilities. Explain your role as a resident, what your responsibility is, what our responsibility is as local government, and all the fire agencies that would potentially respond to your emergency with these new fire hazard severity zones in mind. And fourth, we're looking to gather some feedback. If you have some, you know, this is a platform for the citizens to provide feedback to us about sharing concerns, asking questions, get clarifications that you might need regarding the fire hazard severity zones themselves. And lastly, we want to really promote preparedness and encourage participation in emergency efforts and systems that we have. We use in San Mateo County and other communities do as well, community warning systems. We use in San Mateo County, SMC Alert. So we have some materials there. And Zone Haven and Genesis is our evacuation platform that we have. And we have some important information from you there as well. And then, just briefly, is this, you know, was really meant, each individual fire agency probably couldn't put on a little presentation like this in each one of the communities. So we thought a regional approach might be a better approach to gather people from all communities across the peninsula and use it as an opportunity to get some technical experts on the Cal Fire side, some other folks on the insurance side, to be able to help us explain some of these things. Because truthfully, for the peninsula, it's a new concept in reality, right? In San Bruno, we've been doing wildfire mitigation work for quite some time. But a lot of this is new to many communities through the peninsula. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian and his team. Great. All right. So you can use the mic or just speak right from here, if that works. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it looks like there's technical issues, of course. Yeah, it looks like a chicken.
Yeah, if it's just a minute, folks. Yeah, that's fine. Let's do that. If we have Lisa Strange from the California Department of Insurance, maybe. Lisa, are you there? You can unmute.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, give me just a minute. I'll pull up your presentation and we'll have you go if you're ready.
Sure.
While we, we'll work on this issue here. Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you see our screen here?
Yes. Wonderful.
Lisa, I have the presentation on my computer. If you want. What we can do is you can just go ahead and let me know when you're ready for the next slide.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much. So, good morning, everyone. My name is Lisa Strange and I get to serve as the Northern California Outreach Manager here at the Department of Insurance. And I appreciate the opportunity to share updates with all of you this morning on the insurance market, specifically as it relates to homeowners and businesses. Next slide, please. So before we dive into what the department is doing, I think it's important to know how we got here in the insurance marketplace. As many of us know, insurance companies are leaving the state. More policyholders are turning to the Fair Plan and policy non-renewals are on the rise. But these actions didn't just happen in a vacuum. And there are several key factors driving these changes. And we heard the Assemblymember share many of those factors with us this morning. So I just kind of wanted to quickly reiterate what we're seeing as it relates to the insurance piece. There is an increase in severity and frequency of natural disasters, as well as rising global inflation, which is putting stress on the insurance industry nationwide, and not just in California. The cost of rebuilding homes and businesses has surged. Rising prices for materials, labor shortages, supply chain disruptions and all kinds of stuff. Reinsurance, which is insurance for insurance companies, is becoming harder to obtain and more expensive. And you know, as these risks grow, the insurance market is contracting to protect financial stability. And I think it's important to note that unlike, say, I don't know, public utilities, insurance companies are not legally required to offer coverage unless they can meet all their claims, cover their expenses and earn a fair return. And then I would say that the primary regulatory framework for insurance in California is Proposition 103, which was passed in 1988. That was a long time ago. And so much has changed since then, but the regulatory system has not kept pace with that. So some of the things I'm going to share today are some updates to the market that the department is working on to help us get back to some availability in the insurance market. Next slide, please. So I think we're going to hear more in detail about mitigation efforts folks can take to their homes and property. But just quickly, wanted to share what the insurance implication is around that work that you will do or have done to your home, business, your surroundings and your community. And it's called the Safer From Wildfire Framework. And it's a three-step system, basically like the screen shows, to protect your home or business, surroundings and your whole community. Pretty straightforward. And again, I know you guys are going to talk about it later. But essentially, step one would be do things like Class A fire-rated roof, enclosed eaves, fire-resistant vents, things like that. And then step two of this framework is to protect your surroundings, which again, can be things like clearing the vegetation debris from under your decks, move all combustible materials, you know, things like that. And then finally, there's a step three, which is an effort to obtain a community-level mitigation designation, which could be a fire risk reduction community, which is a designation from the Board of Forestry, or a FireWise USA site in good standing. Next slide. So when you do those steps, your insurance company will provide you a discount. And wanted to also just point out that the Fair Plan also offers this, a discount as well. They have offered a 10% discount on policies in FireWise communities since 2018. And now with this new regulation, even the Fair Plan is offering discounts, two more discounts for the other two buckets, if you will. The first one, which was protecting your structure and then protecting your surroundings. So we're really encouraging homeowners who have done some of that work to work with your agent or broker, find out how you qualify and then when you will receive the discount for that work that you've done. So wanted to just quickly touch on that. The other thing that this Safer From Wildfire Framework regulation does is, for the first time, it is making insurance companies have to share with you your wildfire risk score and what factors went into creating it. So we knew that insurance companies were assigning us scores, but they weren't sharing them with us because they deemed that information proprietary. And now they must share the score with us and tell us what factors went into it. And by having that at our fingertips, it lets us, A, make sure they're rating the right home. You know, we've heard that sometimes they're using drone footage and maybe they get a photo of a different house and then they're rating that house. So there's just lots of reasons why you want to make sure you get the factors that went into creating your score, to A, make sure it's your home. And then if the score, you don't agree with it, you're not satisfied with it because you've done more work than maybe they're saying, you have the right to appeal that score. And if you're not satisfied with that response from your insurer, then we would want you to contact the Department of Insurance and that contact information will be on the last slide so that we can try to help figure out exactly what's going on. So, so kind of high level, quickly, that's the Safer From Wildfire Framework. Next slide, please. And then what we're working on right now is the Sustainable Insurance Strategy. And so, we all know that after wildfires, insurance companies typically raise rates, stop writing new policies, they've canceled the non-renewed policies as soon as the moratorium was lifted. And all of these things were legal under Proposition 103, which I mentioned earlier, is several decades old. So last year, the end of 2024, we finalized this sustainable So last year, the end of 2024, we finalized this Sustainable Insurance Strategy. And since government loves acronyms, you may hear some folks refer to it as CIS or S I S. And so while we can't predict exactly what will happen with rates, our actions will make the market more predictable, stable, and make policies become more available. And so I wanted to just go over today the executive actions and the reforms that we're taking through this new strategy. And first, it requires insurance companies to expand coverage in high-risk areas if they want to use the new risk management tools, which I'm going to go over in just a minute. And then through this, it will reverse the trend of a growing Fair Plan and close the insurance gap. So as you may know, California is the only state that requires the use of historical losses and wildfire data in rate-making. So the new risk management tools include allowing the utilization of forward-looking catastrophe models, which prioritize wildfire safety, mitigation, fuel reduction. So that's why I kind of wanted to touch upon that Safer From Wildfire regulation because when we do those things, now going forward, the cat modeling will recognize all of that work that we've done. And it'll recognize efforts also taken by federal, state, government, utility companies, anybody that's mitigated exposure to wildfires, these cat models will prioritize that. And then in turn, insurance companies will increase their writing because they can better anticipate future losses rather than just non-renewing high-risk policyholders or pausing writing altogether. I think it's important to note that we're not reinventing the wheel here. Most other states already allow private catastrophe models in rate-making. The department has now developed a process to incorporate those models into actuarial formulas in insurer rate filings. And so before allowing insurers to use these models in rate-making, the department will identify distressed areas where they must commit to writing more policies and ensuring that expanded coverage accompanies these changes. And as of, I think it was beginning of March, there were 29 counties identified on that list. The other element, because there are two management tools, so the other tool is to allow insurers to include California-only reinsurance costs in rate-making. So as I briefly mentioned earlier, reinsurance is insurance for insurers to connect, to sort of insulate themselves from part of the risk of a major claims event. And so under this agreement, insurers must commit to writing more policies in wildfire distressed areas of our state before they will be allowed to incorporate the costs into their rates. And then last thing I wanted to say about reinsurance is it's important to know that this will be California-only net reinsurance costs. So it's insurers that the Californians will only pay for disasters that happen here. So we won't pay for East Coast hurricanes or Midwest tornadoes, things like that. Also, we do have commitments from some of the big carriers that we all have heard of, Allstate, Farmers, AAA, that would, once they can use these tools, the cat modeling and the reinsurance, they will start writing policies again in California. And in fact, part of my assigned regions for work are also Butte County, so town of paradise. And Mercury has begun writing there again already. So that's great news. Let's see. So the third element of this strategy is kind of turning to the Fair Plan. And I'm assuming most of us know what the Fair Plan is, but in case we don't, it is the was designed to be the insurer of last resort, though some of us have found it to be the insurer of first resort because we just can't find insurance in the traditional market. And that's problematic because it's expensive and you need to, well, a lot of folks buy a separate wraparound policy or a difference in conditions policy as well to create sort of a full, full coverage. And so it's, it's just very expensive. So we need to do a couple of things, right? Through this strategy, write more policies in the traditional market to reduce the Fair Plan policies. But in the interim, what we have done is expanded the commercial, commercial limits to 20 million per structure with a max of 100 million per location. And this should be in effect and implemented by midsummer. And what this will do is help us close some of those coverage gaps that we're seeing with HOAs, affordable housing, and some of our agribusinesses. And then, let's see. Lastly, and kind of technical, but I think it's important to mention, is that we have streamlined and improved our rate application approval process to reduce delays and ensure that insurers can adjust to these changing market conditions more efficiently. So what does all that mean? So if an insurance company wants to raise their rates by 20%, let's say, they must submit a rate application to the department for approval. And under Prop 103, the department is required to complete this review within 180 days. But in reality, this almost never happens. Some rate reviews have taken over a year to be approved due to multiple factors causing delays. And insurers often submit incomplete applications, leading to back, you know, back and forth exchanges. So does this form, you didn't complete this, and so on. Outdated technology, staffing limitations, and all of these factors have just slowed this process so much. And so in an effort to, to improve this process, the department hired additional staff and has developed new tools to assist us with the data reconciliation to address these challenges. Additionally, if rate adjustments are delayed and lagged behind and lagged behind some of the rising costs that we talked about is kind of what got us in some of this predicament to begin with. It becomes, you know, those catastrophes become more frequent. Insurers could face financial instability and forcing some of them to just leave the market, which we're seeing, or withdraw from writing policies in some of the high-risk areas. And so without timely rate approvals, homeowners are left with fewer options or forced to have the expensive last resort coverage like the Fair Plan. And so the department is addressing some of these challenges by working to streamline this process. And that's going to happen in a timely fashion so that insurers can accurately price risk and continue offering coverage to consumers. Next slide, please. So with all that being said, as I mentioned, those that are, the department's process was complete in December 2024. And so what's next for this S I S? When will it roll out to all of us as consumers? So the department is renew, is reviewing the catastrophe models now. And insurance companies, once those are reviewed and approved, insurance companies will need to submit complete rate applications, which is kind of why I wanted to talk about that process and how we're improving that because they will need to submit more, new application packages and which will include the cat modeling and the reinsurance, the tools that they're required to use. If they want, the tools that they have asked to be able to use to better rate, rate our homes. And then once those filings are approved, insurance companies are expected to have new policies available. So we are hoping by late this year, very early 2026, all of this is completed and folks are able to have new policies available to them. Next slide. So real quick, before I leave today, I wanted to just kind of take a moment so to share, share some of the online tools that we have found help folks find, they kind of like shop the marketplace, if you will. And so we have a top 10 tips for finding residential insurance, which is really a summary of information and options available. We also have a Home Insurance Finder tool, which is my favorite tool. It really helps identify companies that are writing, that may be writing in high-risk regions to help narrow your search. So if you click on that button and when you go to the screen and type in your zip code or city, there's a little box at the bottom. You'll want to click on that if you're in a high-risk region. Click on that and then that's going to show you contact information for agents and brokers that may be writing in your area. So I think that's a very beneficial tool for us. Next slide. And then finally, I just wanted to end by sharing that the department has recently introduced a new Community Outreach Education Partnership Initiative. That's a mouthful. But this program is really designed to raise consumer awareness about the services and sort of understanding key insurance topics at the department. And so if you want to become a valued partner and kind of gain access to our education materials to then share out to your communities, we have social media tools that we can provide to you that you would just then share out on your social media channels. You can click on the QR code on the screen and sign up to receive all of that information. Let's see. And then just real quickly, wanted to end with our contact information. If you have questions about your specific policy on any line of insurance, I know today we're primarily speaking about homeowners insurance, but if you have questions about any line of insurance, you can reach us at our website there or call our toll-free number. Sometimes if you want us to take a specific look at your policy or maybe a claim was denied or you received a non-renewal notice and have questions, we may ask you to fill out a request for assistance form, which just gives us the authority to reach out to the insurer on your behalf and obtain all the records that we would need to, to decide how we can fix that and make sure that everyone's following the laws. And then just lastly, as a recommendation to stay up to date on all current information, for example, if you want to know when, when we're done reviewing the cat models or, you know, anything like that, we do put out pertinent consumer alerts to folks. And so if you go to our homepage, there's an orange banner that says, Consumer Alerts. You can click on that and sign up to receive those alerts and also read any past alerts that we've sent out. So I feel like that's a really good way to just stay current on, on all the information surrounding insurance. So that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any general questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, so we wanted to provide, since the Department of Insurance has a hard stop at 11 o'clock, we wanted to provide a brief opportunity for some question and answers. If anybody had questions for the California Department of Insurance, now's your opportunity. Go ahead. There you go.
Hi Lisa, my name is Michael and my question is similar to the low-cost insurance plan that California has. Does the Department of Insurance plan to introduce a low-cost insurance program for fixed income folks? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for bringing up the low-cost auto insurance program. I, I, I wish we were, we were doing that, but I don't think it's in the works at this time. However, please make sure to work with your agent or broker to see if you qualify for any discounts based on some of the mitigation efforts that you've done around your home or business.
Thank you, Lisa. We have another question for you.
Yeah, I just wanted to know about insurance for apartment living.
Is there any, she, the question was, is there any insurance for folks that are living in apartments? Not necessarily homeowners, but more like a renter's insurance? Is that what you're asking?
Was that about renters insurance?
Correct.
Okay, yes, yeah. And we do actually have a, thank you for bringing that up. My apologies for not talking about renters insurance. And yes, we do have a wonderful brochure about that that I can send over to Sarah to maybe get out to folks when we, if we send out the reporting to folks. But yes, we do, we do regulate renters insurance and have that option and some tips on kind of questions you should ask your agent or broker before you purchase that. So I'd be happy to get that over to you.
This might be more for Assemblywoman Pappen. Ann Schneider spent nine years on the county's Emergency Services Council. Hillsborough received CAL FIRE grants to do fire mitigation work, but that put the city more at risk for any problems that would happen. So for all of us here working for cities, if we help our residents prepare, we're usually insured under a bag, but what will that do to the city's risk of liability? Thank you.
And thank you for your question. And I, I don't have an answer to that. I can certainly circle back unless the Assemblymember is there and wants to, to answer that.
No, no, it's something I think we should be thinking about.
Okay.
Lisa, we have a few more questions here in the audience than we have, I think, two online questions. So we'll take the audience questions here in person first and then we'll go to the online folks.
Thanks, Lisa. Richard McLaughlin. You mentioned that the Safer From Wildfires Regulation requires that insurance companies offer discounts to people who make home hardening and defensible space improvements. Is there any way to publicize the amount of the discounts that are available for the different carriers? I, I've been looking on the website and I can't find that for all the carriers.
Yeah, that's a great question and one that I've asked for, for about a year. And what I'm told is it's different for every carrier and every situation. But I can send a link to where you can find the rate filings for maybe the carrier that you are interested in. Or perhaps if you work with a good agent or broker, they would be able to help you with that information. One thing I do want to share on that, because I did show that the Fair Plan gives discounts and their discounts are, they give a discount for being in a Firewise community and then one for protecting your structure, one for your immediate surroundings, and that's it. So you must do all of the things in the different sections to receive a discount with the Fair Plan. However, with a traditional insurer, it's sort of a do more, save more, if you will. So for example, if you only can do a couple of the things under step one, which was protecting your structure, all you, you know, if you can do vents and windows, do those. And, you know, there's discounts provided for, for each thing you do through a traditional carrier. So I hope that helps a little bit.
All right. Do we have any more questions in the audience here? Okay, we have one right up here.
Lisa, my name's Jennifer. You mentioned there were three items to follow through with to get the discount for the California Fair Plan. Are there, why do, why are there not insurance, why are the insurance companies not consistently participating in those discounts? As we have pursued that, we have a Firewise committee in our area. We've done litigation or mitigation, excuse me. We've had several assessments and we still do not apply or and our insurance keeps increasing every year by at least $1,000 every year. And we do have the California Fair Plan as well as homeowners insurance, two plans.
Okay. And so you, so if you aren't getting discounts at all from either carrier, I think that is at the time when we would want you to contact the Department of Insurance and fill out a request for assistance form so we can take a look at your specific policy to see why those discounts are not being applied. And so that can be done on our website. On the homepage, there is a box. Let me see what it says. It's let's see. So when you go to our homepage, on the first, there's a blue banner of topics. Click on File a Complaint and then there's a box there where you can do that online. And we would like to take a look at that for you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other last-minute questions here in the audience? And if not, we're going to go ahead and move to the online folks that have questions. Chief Koo is going to queue those up from the back of the room here. Who's the first person there, chief? Jay Maron, Maine?
Yes.
You've been unmuted. Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you very much. Lisa, thank you. My name is Joan Main and my question is this. How, can you comment on the solvency of the Fair Plan? How, can you comment on the solvency of the Fair Plan? Given that I understand it's at least partially funded by insurance company profits as the insurance companies leave the state and also after the LA fires.
That's a great question. Thank you for that question. So what I can say as of now is the Fair Plan has loss reserves as a way to pay their claims. They have surplus, they have reinsurance, which we talked about a little bit. And then they have the ability to assess member companies. And I am at, if they feel that they are, and that's sort of to help minimize or eliminate the possibility that the Fair Plan would go insolvent. And so I believe that where we are now is exploring the option of assessing member companies. And I don't know what that's going to look like yet, but I am told that once we learn that, that would be something we would put out in a consumer alert. So I would encourage you to sign up to receive those so that you'll be kept apprised of what that looks like, if that's what we come down to for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then I think we have one more question from the online audience. Jeff?
Yes.
We unmuted you. There you go.
Good morning. Thanks for your time, Lisa. So I have a question for you. So I'm a resident of San Mateo County. I'm a local Realtor, been in the real estate business for almost 40 years. So recently I had a property that I, that I put on the market and I got the NHD report from the third party vendor. And lo and behold, the property, which was not in any of the zones, is now showing that it was in a, what do they call it, a local responsibility, not a hot, not a very high, but a high fire sensitivity zone. So a couple of things that I wanted to point out, first is that when I, when I spoke with a couple of insurance people and my client who owns that property, we're in Esco now, but he had said to me that the insurance companies use their own algorithms to determine whether they're going to write a policy or not. And they don't necessarily just go by the CAL FIRE zones. Like my, my client had to use California Fair and then another wraparound policy even before they made this change in the zone because the, I can't remember which insurance company, I think maybe it was State Farm, said, we're just not going to write on your property. But I did speak to somebody at Cal, Central County Fire Department. And they had said, because that handles, I think, Millbrae, Hillsborough and Burlingame. And they had told me that, for example, the city of Millbrae is meeting on May 24th to determine whether they're going to approve the new CAL FIRE maps, which they said they're going to. But this, I guess my, really my question is, is that I was told that if the property's in a high, but in not a very high fire sensitivity zone, the city is not going to require a fire hardening inspection. But if you're in a very high zone, they may require that inspection. I think this still, some of this is still new, so they weren't totally clear on that. But I have people that are asking me, you know, am I going to have to do these inspections or not? And what I'm telling them so far depends on what, whether you're in a high or a very high fire sensitivity zone. So I don't know if you know the answer to that. Maybe somebody from one of the, one of the local fire departments, Central County Fire can give us more clarity on that, but still not really clear to me. Are people, is everybody going to have to do these inspections or is it going to depend on what zone you're in?
And, and I, I don't know. And I can see that the screen is queued up to talk about those severity zones after me. So I think you're going to get some clarification there. But from the insurance angle, for many years, insurance companies have been using alternate wildfire risk tools for determining where they will write and which policies they're going to renew, how much they're going to charge policy holders, not the fire hazard severity maps. So it's, it's, you know, it's, the, those maps are intended to drive local planning decisions, not insurance decisions. And again, I don't want to speak, you've got a lot of experts here today that can probably speak more clearly to that, Jeff. But if you have questions after today, please reach out to me and we can see if we can help you further.
Okay, yeah, because the, whether they're in the zones or not becomes more of a disclosure issue. You know, for a seller, but yes.
The folks from CAL FIRE would definitely be speaking to that issue for sure.
All right, thank you. So I'll probably queue up a question for them at that point.
All right. So it looks like that's the end of our audience participation, both online and in person. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian and his team from CAL FIRE.
Thank you again, chief. Sorry about that, folks. A little technical difficulty, of course. Good morning. My name is Brian Olson. I'm a battalion chief with CAL FIRE, as Chief Dela said, officer state fire marshal in the land use planning program. With me today, I have Assistant Chief Rudy Bauttizar, Battalion Chief Brian Carter and Battalion Chief Shane Galvez here in the back. Last check, clicker is going to work for me.
What are we doing? His, his presentation is there yet? You can just try to, just share a screen one more time, Brian.
Share a screen?
Yeah. Just do it one more time. The bottom green there. Yeah, because I have a separate last present. Okay. You good?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, awesome. And you guys might need to lean into the mic just a bit because the, the audio here is a little bit, little hard to hear. It, it usually is better. It's going to make it a lot easier, honestly. It'd probably work better, Brian.
All right. I think we're in business now. Sorry about that. Again. So as I said, I'm Brian Olson, battalion chief, officer state fire marshal with the land use planning program. And we're here today to discuss the history and background of fire hazard severity zones, the science behind the maps and local requirements. So before I go any further in the PowerPoint, I do want to go over a few definitions that have been touched on already today. First being state responsibility area or SRA. That is a legal term defining the area where the state has financial responsibility for wildland fire protection and prevention. Second is local responsibility area or LRA. Same thing, except that your cities and counties have legal financial responsibility for wildfire prevention and protection. Next is chapter 7A. Chapter 7A is the chapter in the California Building Code that establishes minimum standards for wildfire resistant construction in buildings located in fire hazard severity zones. And lastly, local agency. Local agency means a city, county, city and county or fire district responsible for fire protection and fire hazard severity zones. So you're going to see those terms throughout the presentation. I just want to clear them up beforehand. So where did it all come from? Where do the maps come from? Where do they begin? Why are we here today? Fire hazard severity zones are not new in the state of California. Historically, we've learned from wildfires to improve regulation. This fire, the Panorama Fire in 1980 was really the beginning of these changes in state responsibility area. Fire, the fire began in San Bernardino Mountains pushed by Santa Ana winds. It burned 28,000 acres, destroyed 325 structures, resulted in four fatalities. Response to this fire, Public Resource Code 4201 mandated CAL FIRE develop fire hazard severity zones in state responsibility area. Eleven years after, the Panorama Fire was the Tunnel Fire, also known as the Oakland Hills Fire. The devastated community not previously identified as a hazard zone because it was located in a local responsibility area. At the time, it was deadliest and most devastating destructive wildfire on record. It burned 1,500 acres, destroyed 2,900 structures and resulted in 25 fatalities. As a result of this fire, legislators adopted Assembly Bill 337, which is also known as the Bates Bill. This legislation mandated the Director of CAL FIRE to assess fire hazard severity zones within the local responsibility area and proposed recommendations to identify the very high fire hazard severity zones to local authorities. Assembly Bill 337 led to Government Code Section 51179, which obligates local authority to take mitigating actions. Here you have a timeline of the fire hazard severity zones. You'll see on the left in 1980, which we just discussed, was the Panorama Fire. 1982, Public Resource Code 4201 mandated CAL FIRE develop fire hazard severity zones. 85 of those maps were completed for SRA. And then 1991 was the Tunnel Fire. 92 was the Bates Bill we just discussed. And then in 2007, CAL FIRE finalized the statewide maps and it took a few years to get those maps out to local agencies. And after that, you'll see a couple of significant events. In 2017 was the Tubbs Fire. It burned 36,000 acres, destroyed 5,600 homes, excuse me, structures, and it resulted in 22 fatalities. And in 2018, the Campfire in Paradise, 153,000 acres, destroyed 18,000 structures and resulted in 85 fatalities. After these two events, Assembly Bill, legislators passed Assembly Bill 642 and Senate Bill 63, which required CAL FIRE to identify now the moderate and the high fire hazards, fire hazard severity zones for the LRA. 2007, all we identified was the very high. Now we have to identify all three zones in LRA. And AB 211 in 2022 requires local agencies to adopt those two new zones, moderate and high, by ordinance. So that's a timeline from where the fire hazard severity zones began to where we are today. Government Code 51178 outlines our responsibility as a state agency. So the state fire marshal is tasked with identifying fire hazard severity zones statewide. As I said, this involves categorizing areas in a state as moderate, high or very high. And why do we do this? It's to identify the hazards so that public officials can identify measures that will reduce the spread and the potential intensity of uncontrolled fires that threaten to destroy resources, life and property. The maps are used as a tool for long range planning and development. The science and methods. So there's been several critical factors that highlight the current update of the maps. The advancement in scientific factors, local climate data and enhanced fire assessment modeling. The process began with legislation, which we just discussed from the timeline. We now have to identify all three zones in local responsibility area. And the updates to the modeling, they include improvements in technology, burn probabilities, fire environment, vegetation density, slope, localized fire weather and new firebrand production and transport modeling using localized wind data. So in 2007, the FRAP team, I say we, but it's, we have a program within CAL FIRE known as the Fire Resource Assessment Program or FRAP. Those are environmental scientists. They're the ones that create the maps and do the modeling. So in 2007, they use a generalized weather pattern statewide for the modeling. This time around, we're using localized weather with local weather stations. So we're getting your local wind data and weather data. We also, they also introduced firebrands into the models. So with the local weather and the introduction of firebrands, we're seeing those zones increase and decrease statewide with that new modeling, new technology. Hazard versus risk, as Chief Dela mentioned, we'll go over this. So fire hazard severity zones map evaluate hazard instead of risk. It's similar to flood zone maps characterizing areas based on the probability of a particular area being affected by fire rather than outlining the specific impacts. So the definition for hazard is based on a physical condition that creates the likelihood and expected fire behavior over 50 years without considering mitigation measures like defensible space and home hardening and fuel reduction projects. Risk is the potential damage a fire can cause due to the area under existing conditions accounting for those mitigation measures I've mentioned, like defensible space and home hardening such. So our maps are hazard maps, long-term maps. To put it another way, if your home is located adjacent to wildlands, say your home's next to some hills, which has covered in vegetation, grass, brush, trees, that's the hazard. That's what we've been tasked with categorizing and identifying statewide. And based on the vegetation and the slope and the local weather, that'll get that moderate, high or very high. Your home being near that hazard is the risk. You can reduce the risk by home hardening, defensible space, fuel reduction projects in that area. Enhancing life and property safety. So CAL FIRE's goal is to assist local agencies with life and property safety. We work closely with the building industry when setting various building codes and defensible space standards. The goal is not to impede development, but to ensure that development aligns with the hazards for the area. This is a diagram. You'll see on the left-hand side is SRA, so state responsibility area. These are the examples of state minimum requirements in both SRA and LRA for each zone. So you'll notice in the SRA, all of the requirements are in green. They're the same for each zone except for the moderate hazard disclosures are not required in the moderate. On the right-hand side is the local responsibility area, state minimum requirements. In the very high, you'll notice that the requirements are the same in the SRA as they are in the LRA. And as I mentioned, we're now identifying the high and the moderate in the LRA. So there are some new requirements. In the high, you see that local agencies have to adopt the recommended maps from the state fire marshal by ordinance. Hazard disclosures, so if you're selling, like the gentleman online just mentioned, if you are selling a home and your home is located in a high fire hazard severity zone or a very high, you have to produce a hazard disclosure to that buyer. And chapter 7A, the definition I mentioned earlier is building to the highest standards for wildland fire. That'll take effect in the high fire hazard severity zone for LRA, January 1st, 2026. Local agency requirements. The local agency requirements begin with the transmittal of the maps from the state fire marshal identifying the fire hazard severity zones. This took place for San Mateo County on February 24th of this year. This begins two simultaneous timelines. First, within 30 days of receiving the maps, local agency has to make that information available for public review and comment. Second, 120 days after getting the transmittal from the state fire marshal, the local agency shall adopt the moderate, high and very high by ordinance. And the final step in the process is once that ordinance has been adopted by the local agency, a copy of it has to be sent to the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. And that'll conclude the local agency's requirements to adopt the fire hazard severity zones. So this was just a brief overview of the history, background, a little science of fire hazard severity zones. My partner, Chief Brian Carter, is going to show you some more resources available for you if you want to look into it further. Thank you. So like he said, he, he went over the history, the science and things like that. It's a lot of information to take in. So I'm going to walk you through our public facing website that will provide you some resources to help answer questions, but also identify what zone you are in. In addition to that, we do have some brochures in the back for a wildfire action plan. And if you have a cell phone, we have a QR codes to get to our website and get to another frequently asked questions about fire hazard severity. So now I'm going to see if I can transition in this screen. So let's see how this goes. Got to reshare my screen again. Let's do this.
I want to hand out to the San Bernardino residents, just know that all of our information can officially see this website, official maps.
Perfect. Thank you, chief. And that's something I was going to go over as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief. And that's something I was going to go over as well. A lot of the things we do as the state, we will be able there to answer the high-level questions about the model, about the legislative process, legal requirements. But there will be specific things that the cities and counties in the area that we'll have, and we will direct you there. And that's what I'm going to show you. So the first page here I brought up is Cal Fire's public website. Uh, if you've never been here, it is fire.ca.gov. One of the things we rolled out last year that we're really proud of is this map, and this is, uh, fire incidents. Currently, there's no real active incidents. The green ones are control burns. But during active fire behavior, you will see all wildfire incidents in the state of California here. The map was updated to also include aircraft tracking. So somebody remember Poppen talked about Governor Newsom announcing the second of our C-130s being activated this week. And so now, when there's active incidents, you can actually go in here and track the aircraft as they're flying. So it's a pretty cool resource available to the public. As we're all here, fire hazard severity zones are a hot topic. So if you scroll down front and center, right below the incident activity, is our fire hazard severity zone public website. This is hosted through our office of the state fire marshal. This is specific, uh, public information accessible to all of you and, uh, lots of resources for you to use. So the first couple are videos that our team produced with our communications team. These go over a lot of the information that Chief Olson went over with you, the history of fire hazard zones, what are fire hazard severity zones, frequently asked questions. Right here, we have a frequently asked questions document. This one answers a lot of questions. It may have basic information. And the, uh, it's in English and Spanish. Uh, right below that is the graphic that was shown in the PowerPoint, that Chief Olson showed you about the specific. We really emphasize the title. This is examples of state, uh, minimum fire, uh, requirements. These are what are the minimum requirements in these areas, uh, which he did, really said. It is, there are the, the local agencies, local responsibility jurisdictions, do have the ability to increase or make more requirements. So it's always important to contact your local fire department to see if there are more. Because we cover the state, we, we display what are the state minimum requirements for all the fire hazard severity zones here. Below this is our online viewer. So this says explore fire hazard severity zones. With this viewer, you can enter your address and look at your specific, uh, location. And I, I found one the other day to show you. Of course, it doesn't come up right. There's a lot of John Muir Elementary Schools. I was just going to use this as an example to show you a local one. There it is. What's a popular name for elementary schools? Uh, but this is a statewide map, so that makes it important to put in your correct address. So what this viewer will allow you to do is put your address in. And we've talked about, uh, different responsibility areas. This will tell you which responsibility area you are in. So it references that you are in local responsibility area. It also shows you with a visual display of color, uh, and written description here. The geographic center of this parcel is located in a very high fire hazard severity zone. So now you'll have the ability to identify what responsibility area you're in, what fire hazard severity zone you are in, which will help you use, find those requirements that you have. And if you scroll down, it also, because it's a local responsibility area, it has information here to come back and contact your local fire department to ask those specific local questions. The other option on this is because we talked about the two thousand and seven maps and these new maps is you can click on this to compare. Now, what this map does is it will show the difference between the two thousand and seven map and the current updated map that, uh, being adopted currently. So one thing to remember though, is this version of the map only shows the new map for local responsibility area. It does not show state responsibility area. So you'll see areas that may be a little bit different than that first map. But here you can see the change of, of increase in, uh, fire hazard severity zones in both very high, high, and moderate, talking about the localized weather and, uh, brand production, embers production. If I drag this over here, and again, there is a blank area in the center here. That part of the map is state responsibility area. And so you don't see it on this slider. The slider is only for the current map update. If you go back to the other map, you'll see that a state responsibility area. Now, the impact is that hazard from those wildland areas, those localized weather. Chief Olson went over briefly about the initial map, two thousand and seven map was just high-level winds. And now it includes very localized winds all the way down to a two kilometer, two kilometer grid. And the other big influence is ember production. So a fire in that vegetation on those hills is going to produce a lot of embers that come in and the wind pushing it into the homes, providing that risk in that area. So like I said, that viewer is available to publicly determine your responsibility area and your fire hazard severity zone. If you keep moving down, the, we have different banners here, again, local responsibility area and state responsibility area. In this folder, you'll be able to download the PDF maps. In fact, they have printed up large copies of them. There are maps for that for each county and for each jurisdiction that have been identified with fire hazards, fire hazard severity zones. And this form here actually shows you changes in acreage. So a lot of data, a lot of information available to that. You can see the difference and the number of acres between, uh, that came from the old and the new maps. Within, if you live within state responsibility area, uh, the state responsibility area maps were adopted last year, April first. Um, and you can look at the maps there. If you really, really, really want to take a deep dive into the science, Chief Olson talked about our FRAP program. Our FRAP program has, uh, environmental scientists, GIS specialists. If you want to know how the model was built, this specific video here, the Science and Methods map, is, uh, is very, very detailed and very, very technical. It is interesting, but it goes through every step of the process to see how all those different influences in the data affect the model and really impact you. Uh, so it is a, uh, it's a great video, but like I said, very technical, very detailed. The next step is how to enhance your property's fire safety. This video labeled Plan and Know and Act goes through all the things you can do as a homeowner to make your home more resilient to wildfire. Uh, and then below here, we have another tab for Science and Methods. This one actually goes through, the, the video goes through these things, but if you want to, if you want to see more, it actually goes through written explanation of the model. And we also provide you access to, I gotta scroll all the way down again. Access to the data sources that we use in the model. So again, if you have questions about where we got the information that's input into the model, it's all right here publicly available to you. Uh, we also have some definitions. These are the definitions of the inputs that go into the data model. Vegetation, topography, climate. Like I said, the climate includes weather at a very localized level. Crown fire potential, amber production being the big, really big influence now of embers being produced by vegetation nearby and including in fire history. We do also have, uh, contact information here for the Department of Insurance. And as well at the bottom, we have our contact information. So we have an email address and a phone number. If you have looked at the viewer, found out what zone you're in, and you have high-level questions about the process, you can reach us here. If not, we have that contact information for your local fire department to get local questions answered. And with that, I have nothing further. Give it back. Are we going to you first?
Sure.
Yeah, that, that was all we have for now. The original, yeah. So that is fire.
Fire.ca.gov. Yep. And with that, uh, we're going to take a brief moment. I'm going to bring up a presentation for Joel from, uh, the United Policy Holders Group. Joel's a great resource for us. Um, give me just a moment. I'm going to share my screen.
Doing that, I'm going to start out with the child's game, if you're willing to play, polite version.
Right here, Joel. I'll give you the mic.
It's called Simon Says. And, uh, the polite version is, Simon says, would everyone please stand up? Now, you've been sitting for a while now, hearing a lot of information. So Simon would ask, would you please just sway a little bit? And get the feeling back in your legs and feet while we load that PowerPoint and you ready yourselves for another dose of information. So just a moment. Oh.
You can tell me to click the next slide, or you can do it yourself.
Oh, wow. I prefer giving orders, but I'll do it. So just one more sway. And Simon would ask that you please raise your arms up a little bit. Just a little bit, yeah. Then one couple more sways. And then gently reseat yourselves, please. So thank you for your patience and, uh, listening to all of us. I appreciate that. I am with the United Policy Holders, and United Policy Holders is a nonprofit that, uh, started out after the Tunnel Fire, which we've seen slides about. And our main, uh, focus has been helping people go through the massive claims process that people have to deal with if they suffer a total loss or even a partial loss after a catastrophic event. And so I'm going to talk a bit about insurance again. So a little follow-up on what the Department of Insurance did, talked about, but from our, uh, perspective. So United Policy Holders mentioned nonprofit. Um, what you paid, uh, to enter today to, uh, hear me speak is what we ask everybody to pay, which is nothing. Um, so, um, we're funded by donations. And, um, we have been at pretty much every recent catastrophic event from Hawaii to Florida to Colorado. So I, I do want to talk about a little bit again about how insurance works and the challenges people are facing in today's market. And, you know, the main thing probably everyone has noticed is how much your premium is increasing. And just to give you a sense of how that really plays out. So State Farm, um, insurers usually ask for single-digit increases because they want to avoid what are called intervenors that, uh, can get involved in the filing and, and, uh, express their own opinions. So usually insurers ask for, uh, single-digit increases. But given the increasing number of losses they've had, some insurers, including State Farm, have moved forward to ask for double-digit increases. And the biggest, most notable one, uh, was a couple of years ago. State Farm came in and requested a twenty percent increase. That's the, a lot to ask all at once. And ultimately, that, uh, rate increase was approved. And it has been playing out in State Farm's renewals for the last couple of years. But when you hear twenty percent, you think, okay, uh, that's what I'm going to experience. But not, that is an average, right? That's the overall increase. But some areas are going to receive a lower increase and some higher increase. So we can see here from, um, looking at the rate filing, I pulled out some of the local ones where I do presentations, including here. San Bruno got an eighteen point three percent on average increase. And again, we're talking about an average. So there's, could be someone in San Bruno who got a nine percent increase and somebody who got a fifty percent increase. And we'll kind of look at how that plays out. I've been doing presentations all these places recently. Uh, the one, uh, Ojai was, uh, had the biggest issue. Their on-average increase was seventy-five percent. So that's how that plus twenty played out for them. And of course, that seventy-five percent is an average, meaning some people in Ojai got over a hundred percent increase. And so what do they have, what do they say when they get that increase? I guess I'm lucky to get a renewal. I mean, that's the way today's current market is, right? Because if you try and find another carrier to write you as new business, you're probably out of luck in many cases, especially if you're anywhere like in Ojai in a super-high-risk area. So just to get a sense of, well, how does that average kind of work? This is San Bruno, a little satellite shot. And, uh, I see our location right now is marked there with a little pin. And there are two little weird circles, look like a pair of eyes looking out from the screen. So that is to represent how insurers use their wildfire risk models, right? Not the state hazard map to determine how much one home is going to be charged versus another. And in the middle of each of those circles, just they're representing, there's a home in that, in the middle of the circle that the insurer is evaluating. So these two homes are only maybe a couple of blocks apart. But they can have significantly different premiums from the same insurer because each home gets its own risk score. And just a few houses away, you might be a little closer to more fuel. You might be a little bit up a steeper slope. So just that difference can make the difference in what you're going to pay for premium. Or even if you're eligible for, for coverage, right? Insurers are using scoring models that score risks, some from one to twenty, some from one to a hundred. And if, you know, insurer writes to a level of ten and you happen to be in eleven, you're out of luck. So that this is kind of one of the underwriting tools that, and rate segmentation tools, we call it, that has, has evolved in the last twenty-five years or so. Now, that was a satellite imagery, right? So they're telling kind of very crude level things, slope, fuel, that type of thing. Now insurers also use aerial imagery. And so that gives them literally a more granular view of each home. And you can see from the aerial image of this home that there are tree limbs extending out over the roof. That's going to be a problem most likely. You know, that limb is not new. That's been there for years. But unless an insurer sent out an inspector, which they almost never do anymore or for the last several years, that would have gone unseen, right? It wasn't part of the, uh, of, part of the evaluation. But now the insurer sees that. And they're not going to want to necessarily renew that home, right? And that's, you know, probably a nice, healthy oak tree. You're going to have a choice of removing that tree or, you know, shearing off one half of its limbs. But, um, if you don't, right, then you can be non-renewed. And, uh, if that happens, it's a very difficult market to find coverage in. But this is how things have evolved from more scores that differentiated something that never was, uh, part of the analysis before, slope, and, you know, how close you are to brush. And now to very specific to the property details about, you know, the landscaping around the home. They'll also notice trampolines and pools and other hazards as well. So, you know, there is some good news, and that is the mandate for discounts if you do take these actions. Every insurer does them. You heard this from Lisa, um, from the Department of Insurance. Every insurer must give you a discount for each one of these actions. That discount is generally, I will say, a pretty small one, especially if you get a sixty-eight percent rate increase and get a ten percent discount. You're not going to think your renewal was all that positive of a result. But it's least, uh, it is at least something. And more importantly, what we're really hoping for, I think, is herd immunity. And that is, we're hoping that every homeowner takes these actions, right? You would be served well if your neighbors on every side of your home did this and you did this, right? You would, one home alone probably doesn't really change much of the risk. You would, one home alone probably doesn't really change much of the risk. But a multiple homes surrounding each other that have taken this, then it starts to make an impact. That is where we're heading, mitigation actions. In fact, I'm so committed to mitigation actions, you can see, if you see my face up close. You can see I'm participating in a controlled burn. So, you know, so mitigate the chance of, we won't go there. But so this is what we all need to do, you know? We need to do what we can to mitigate the risk around our homes. But also thinking about how we're benefiting our neighbors. So some of these are very expensive to do. Unfortunately, this list, unlike some others. Includes enclosed eaves, that's kind of hard to find somebody to do and do it cheaply. If you have that issue with your home, leave it for last, I don't know. Do the other ones though, right? Class A rated roof, most everybody has that today anyway. Luckily, there aren't many wood shingle roofs. Fire resistant vents, I will mention, of course, we have some examples over there on the side. But my own fire chief said, oh, you can just wrap your existing vents in a tighter, the tighter mesh screen. And do it yourself. And I actually, well, to prove whether that was true, I did that. Bought a big roll of screen, cut it with snip, these snippers. And wrapped my vent and stuck them back in. It's not pretty, like any project I do at home. But at least I now have that tighter mesh that is ember resistant on my vents. But do any of these that you can, leave the ones that will take questions. Leave the ones that are more expensive or that you can't do till later. But don't let that stop you from getting started. If you are non renewed, right, in California, we're lucky, we get 75 days notice. That's I think longer than any other state. But you, and you know, when you get that notice. You usually like to put it aside and like groan about it for a few weeks, right? Like resentfully, I have been with them for 20 years. I never had a claim, all that that goes through. But you have to move on, that doesn't matter. You had one year contracts, you weren't married. So even a marriage can end, much less an insurance policy. So you have to get going. The insurer has to cite the specific reason for the non renewal. And if you can address that reason, let's say it is your roof, right? Wood shake roof. If you can get that done in those 75 days, they should renew you. So you need to get on that with your agent immediately. I'm getting the contractor out here. I'm going to have a class A roof within two weeks from now. And the agent needs to contact the insurer to start backtracking on that non renewal, right? You want to get the insurer understanding that you are correcting the item. They cited as the reason for the non renewal. And legally, they should then reinstate your renewal process. If they don't, you need to contact the Department of Insurance. So if, you know, it is something that you cannot change. So they, they may say, you're in a higher wildfire zone than we care to continue writing in. Maybe nothing you can do about that. That means you need to get shopping right away. Because it is a tough market to find new coverage. You know, there are all these reasons for non renewal. So I should mention, you know, some of them are very easy to address. Some of them are galvanized pipes and almost all homes from the 60s have galvanized pipes. But you know, some of them are springing leaks. You just want to make sure that you haven't had that issue. Knob and tube wiring, that's more of a thing for Victorians. But that has been an issue, pools and trampolines I mentioned before. Try to avoid buying a trampoline that you're only going to use for about a month anyway. And then you're going to get tired of it. So avoid those. If you have an in-ground pool, there's probably not much you can do about it. But if those happen, you need to get shopping, right? So you want to make sure that you start doing anything you can. To, you know, improve your home as a prospect for an insurer that'd be willing to write it. So, you know, if there's anything at your home, you want to, you want to present the best picture you can. Of your dwelling to the next insurer. So you want to take care of those hazards. So when you apply for the coverage, you're able to say, I have the ember resistant vents. I have the class A roof. So, you know, you want to get going on the mitigations and on the shopping. Right?
No, you're good.
Okay. So the department stole one of my slides. But it mentions the top 10 tips, so you can go there to look for ways to find renewal options. One of the, one of those top 10 tips, if you open up that link. Is the 800 number of every admitted insurer that writes homeowner's insurance. So you can, if you're, you know, a glutton for punishment, but. You know, if you're looking for homeowner's insurance and you really need it, you don't want to be in the fair plan. Maybe you're going to call all of those 800 numbers. To see if they can refer you to a local agent or if they can quote you directly for coverage. So that, it is a grueling process. But let me see if I have a slide that shows. Those 800 numbers include a lot of companies you may have never heard of. Tokyo Marine Insurance Company, California Capital, right? Most of us only know like five insurance companies names. There are like 80 companies writing homeowner's insurance in California. So, you know, a lot of them aren't looking to write more high risk business. So it'll be rough. But hey, what do you have to lose? Because if you end up in the fair plan, you're going to be paying a lot of money. Even with all the discounts you might earn there. So do as much mitigation as you can, that, you know, these are the ways to lower up your premium. In a time when premiums are only skyrocketing up. Do the mitigations, you know, maybe you have to move your auto policy to your homeowner's policy. I will say, some insurers are, have great deals on auto insurance. And so it's great to place your coverage with them. But given how much the homeowner's premium goes up. A little discount, the discount you get for packaging your auto policy. The discount to your homeowner's policy may make it a better deal. To take a higher auto policy price with the same insurer that you have your home with. Than getting the best deal for the auto separately from the home. And I don't know if any of that made sense to you, but I said those words anyway. Raise your deductible. I'll say, you know, a lot of us just go with one insurer and renew year after year after year. And when you first place that coverage, wow, $500 loss, that would be a lot. I would want insurance for anything more than that. That was 20 years ago, right? $500 is not a big loss anymore. Raise your deductible to whatever level of loss you're willing to handle yourself, right? Maybe that's $5,000, $10,000. You don't want to call your insurer with some small loss, right? And have them, A, think, you know, you don't maintain your property. And maybe see some other things around your home that they don't like, you know? And considering that for their next renewal or not. So raise your deductible to whatever you're, you know, you can handle. And you'll lower your premium and, you know, not interact with your insurer. And just a couple, kind of on, on the big picture arena, admitted insurers. Those are those ones I mentioned with the 800 numbers. There are the State Farms in all states and all of those farmers and. But there's also those others, Tokyo Marine I mentioned, or Mercury. Whole bunch of admitted insurers. Admitted insurers, if they do go insolvent, which did occur with one insurer in the Campfire up in Paradise. If they go insolvent, all of their claims will still be paid. Because they're members of the California Insurance Guarantee Association. So they all pitch in to pay a loss. If you end up with a surplus lines carrier or a excess company, non admitted, any of those terms kind of mean the same thing. They are not backed by the Guarantee Association. Meaning you need to find out what their financial rating is. For most, most insurance companies have what's called a best's financial rating, best, like the goodness. The best rating, you want a B plus or better. You don't want a C rated or even a B rated surplus lines carrier covering your home. Because if they go insolvent, because they wrote a lot of business. Nobody's paying their claims. So try, you know, if you end up there, you end up there, if you can't do anything about it. But if you have choices, you want to be an admitted carrier. Or a high financial rating, a non admitted carrier. Government created, the fair plan is also financially secure. It is backed, and I think Lisa mentioned this as well, by all the insurers. They're going to have to pay off, probably from these most recent fires. They're going to have to be contributing to pay off the fair plan's claims. And possibly passing on some of that cost to you as well, because that is a new law. But the fair plan is also financially secure. And some people hear, oh, well, I have, my lender will place coverage if I don't have coverage. Well, that, that coverage only protects them, not you. So you don't, you have to pay for it and it doesn't really do anything for you. So again, if you do get in, end up in the fair plan, you want to get a difference in conditions policy. That covers things, fair plan is mostly just a fire policy. The number two most common claim that people have is water damage. A fair plan policy doesn't cover that, right? Your pipe bursts somewhere and you have water damage everywhere. So for that, you, you want a difference in conditions policy. Another issue of not having difference in conditions, it covers liability. Liability claims are very rare, right? We don't get many times that somebody gets injured on your property. But if that does happen, it can be tens of thousands of dollars if somebody hurts themselves on your property somehow. So you want to have a DIC policy, if you have a fair plan policy. And avoid being underinsured, almost everybody is today. If you go home and look at your homeowner's policy, you might find that equates to. What would be like $300, $400 a square foot? You know, if you have a thousand, a thousand square foot home, if you have a 300,000 limit on your home. That's a 300 per square foot calculus. The price to rebuild today is more like 500 or 600, oops, sorry. The price to rebuild today is much higher. And you can imagine after catastrophe, it even accelerates dramatically to get a contractor then. So at least, nobody wants to pay more in premium. The odds of you ever using your insurance are still low. But at least make sure your limits are in the range of reasonable. So that if you do have a total loss, you know, it won't be a devastating thing. I think CDI also mentioned inventorying your personal property, I'll make that real quick. To collect on your homeowners, if you had a loss, a contents loss. To collect that money, an insurer can ask you to identify every single thing you had. What you paid for it, when you bought it, in what condition it is in now. And then you go and buy it and they'll pay you then the actual cash value, depreciated value, that means. And then if you go replace it, then you get replacement cost value. It's a grueling thing. And you can ease this process by at least inventorying your contents now. And that means just taking a phone video of everything in all your cabinets and closets and drawers. And at least you have evidence that this is all the stuff I had, right? I didn't just have three shirts hanging in the closet. I had this whole load, even though I never wore half of them. So do that, and at least it also reminds you of everything you had, if you do have to go through the process. And the department mentioned their sustainable insurance strategy. That is maybe a positive thing in that insurers were, will be much more likely to write more coverage. What is the quid pro quo? They're going to be charging a lot more. So if you see that State Farm gets 20% and now just got another 17%. That's before this stuff kicks in. These are also going to be double digit increases at the least. So, you know, there's a lot of bad news with this good news. We're hoping for a lot more availability. But there's going to be a lot less affordability coming, unfortunately. I'm not sure, I love what happened there, but that's the compromise that was made. Please take our home survey if you would, uphelp.org, California Home Survey. And here comes your favorite part of this presentation. I'm going to stop talking. And so thanks for listening. And for any insurance issues, please go to uphelp.org. It's entirely free and we are only here to serve you. So thanks for listening. And I think all questions are going to come in later.
All right, just to kind of get things moving, just so we get through stuff. I've got Denise Ania, I'm not even going to bring up her slide deck. She's going to talk to you briefly about the Samatillo County Fire Safe Council, just for a couple of minutes. And then we'll get rolling with our Q and A.
Okay, great, really quick. Good afternoon, everybody. So we've heard a lot about what insurance companies want you to do and how they want you to do them. And wanted to just introduce Fire Safe Samatillo County. I'm the executive director. So what we are is we're an independent nonprofit entity with the sole mission. Of helping with fire prevention in Samatillo County. So we're here to help, we're here to assist. What is wildfire prevention? Well, it's everything that the insurance companies are going to make you do to keep your insurance. So we're talking about defensible space around your structure. We're talking about home hardening. We're talking about reducing hazardous fuels in the forested lands. And we're talking about reducing ignitions in the first place, real core to fire prevention. So Fire Safe Samatillo County, we assist with all those things. We have a chipper program and you'll be happy to hear that will be in San Bruno this year. It's a free program. The information will go to San Bruno Fire and they will disseminate it out to you all. We target the high, in the very high fire risk areas. We also apply and implement as many grants as we can. For the high and very high fire severity zones. We help with roadside evacuations and fuel reduction. We've done quite a few programs, projects where we reduce the hazards along the roadway. So if there is a fire, you're able to safely evacuate. We target hazard trees along the ignition lines with PG&E. So those are just a few of the things we do. I'm in, I, I came here with Don Builder, one of our Fire Safe Board members. And I brought a slew of home hardening materials. Many of you understand and are familiar with defensible space. But I think there's a little bit of lack of education on home hardening. And the materials that you need to use if you want your house to remain ignition resistant. So please come by, we can talk about, you know, what pertains to your property. Give you some information on what you can use and how it will help keep your, your home and your family safe.
Thank you Denise. Awesome. And if we can get Chief Olson, if you can get your team of folks, whoever's going to be here for the Q and A, just to hop up here real quick. And Denise is going to hop up there as well. And while they're hopping up there, I will just briefly talk about San Bruno. Some of the efforts for the San Bruno residents, we have a pretty significant wildfire mitigation program. That I started when I first got here. Crestmore Canyon is one of them, it's one of our big threats here in San Bruno. And we annually do. It's one of our big threats here in San Bruno and we annually, uh, do a significant amount of wildfire mitigation in Crestmore Canyon itself. Uh, there's about, uh, $3 million of PG&E funds that were, uh, negotiated, uh, with the courts, uh, after the pipeline explosion that helped contribute towards that effort on an annual basis. We, uh, also through the support of the council have a, what we call the Community Wildfire Mitigation Program. And we are working in those same severity zones, those very high and high severity zones to reduce risk in the neighborhoods. And then thanks to Denise and the partnership with the San Mateo County Fire Safe Program, we have, uh, developed a chipper program over the last few years that we're doing as well. So with that, I'd just like to open it up, uh, to the audience, uh, both in person and virtual, if they have any questions, uh, for our panelists, including myself if you do. Okay.
Thanks for being here. Uh, we are in the Crestmore area. We are near John Muir. Thank you. Uh, there is what I believe is an easement behind our property. Who mitigates that? Who's in charge of, where, where do I go to go take down trees? Who does it for us?
Yeah, I think I could probably take that one for the group. So you're in Crestmore, uh, your easement is, uh, which, which easement are you talking about? And so it's a PG&E easement. Yeah, so a PG&E easement, uh, there's some very specific rules and requirements that PG&E has through, uh, CPUC that, that dictate what they can and can't do when they're doing fuel reduction. Their work is typically done in and around the, you know, the, obviously the utility lines. Um, if you have any specific stuff that you need to get addressed, that's not getting addressed by the PG&E crews if they're doing work there, um, you can contact us at the Fire Department here in San Bruno and we'd be more than happy to make sure we get you in contact with the right folks or to figure out exactly whose property it is. A lot of times it's, it's not really clear. There's sometimes easements, but there's different ownership. So that's, sometimes it's get clear, but I'll get you my contact information and we can definitely look that up for you and try to get it solved for you. Oh, you're going to, you're going to, she's going to walk around.
Yeah.
No, I'll be with you guys.
This regarding the, uh, you said State Farm?
Yes.
I, I have car insurance with them. Do you think they would have rental insurance?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Most of those insurers listed their right renters. Most home, most insurers that write homeowner's insurance also write renters insurance and, um, condominium owners insurance.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Paula Dorinchelli and I also live in the Crestmore 3 area around John Muir. And that whole area is now defined as a high risk, which is very impactful. And I also want to call out, there's a lot of areas that are not necessarily PG&E that are actually San Bruno easements that are not maintained and it's left for the homeowner to try to create their own defensible space. But when you have a labeling as high risk, we're sort of defeated. And when we've asked for help, we do not get any help. So I'm not sure where else to go and we have, I've been directed to work with Park and Rec for, because they don't maintain their trees and if a tree comes down, that right there increases the fire risk even furthermore. So we, we recognize the importance of having, um, risk categorization. Okay, that's really important for all of us to have that awareness, to be part of this solution. However, our hands are tied when other entities are not following through with their responsibilities. And now we own the problem. So can you help with that?
All right. So, um, this is, is, is something that's, I, I want to explain it to the folks for San Bruno. I don't want to speak for all the jurisdictions, but for the city of San Bruno, wildfire mitigation is fairly new. I've been here as the fire chief for about five years now and we started, uh, a significant slew of wildfire mitigation, uh, when I first got here, starting with Crestmore Canyon. Uh, we've worked with the California Conservation Corps specifically in Crestmore Canyon. That's a big giant effort. That effort was funded. Um, and then the council was, uh, uh, good enough to be able to get some funds together to do while, uh, this community wildfire mitigation program now. And we have, uh, previously we spent about $150,000 a year on wildfire mitigation through the city, but it isn't, I'll be straight with you, it is a massive problem, right? If you look at San Bruno as a whole, right? And across the peninsula, it's a big problem. And it's a big problem that's really been newly identified to us. It's kind of a wake-up call for the peninsula, right? Not a lot of fire history, not a lot of devastating fires that impacted communities close to us. So it's, you know, and my background in history, that's why I brought to San Bruno. I think it was honestly one of the reasons I got here is, uh, is, uh, we, and then, so I created this, uh, citywide wildfire mitigation program and we're going through the very high and high areas actually in the city properties and the, the rear of the houses, doing that defensible space work. Um, I can definitely work with you and get in touch with you, but we've worked off of Bennington, we've worked with Buckeye Park, um, all of these areas over the last four years with the city wide wildfire mitigation program. But I'm more than happy to talk to you about your neighborhood and let you know kind of like where it is on the list because we're working kind of our way and marching our way down. But it's, 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 it's a large task. I'll be straight with you.
I have a similar question, but it's for the state. So my home backs up to, to 80 and there's a lot of bad trees, dead trees, they just let them fall. When is the state going to come in and clean that up? Cause it comes right up to my backyard. And who do I contact?
Do you know what state it is?
State.
Okay.
Just, just briefly is, you're talking about Caltrans, right? Up on 280? Yeah, yeah. I don't know, if you want to take a stab at it. Yeah. Yeah. Caltrans is the responsible agency for the, the roadways and the, and the right of way up against 280, obviously 380 and some other areas throughout the, the region here. Um, okay, I'll get you. And, uh, we are actually working pretty extensively just recently with Caltrans representatives, actually working with Denise and the Fire Safe Council. Uh, a lot of the issue with Caltrans, honestly, it's funding, right? So they know that, uh, they know and understand that there's this risk, but it's getting funding to be able to attack the problem. So we're working with Denise, uh, they have pushed some funding to us. Caltrans is, uh, willing to help, but they don't have, you know, giant buckets of money to be able, and these, I'll give you an example. We did a project on Sneethe, uh, Sneethe, took out five or six eucalyptus trees. It was $47,000 for five trees, right? So you can see, and if you can expand that, you know, problem and across the city and honestly across the region, you can imagine the total cost of those projects. So, but that's the, the specific agency there. And we're working most recently within the last six months, uh, with Caltrans on some of that work. And they've actually recently done some right along Skyline and the off-ramp to, uh, San Bruno Avenue. Uh, we've did a significant project right there.
Thank you. My name is Michael and I think this question might be for the two at the end. What about resources to help folks fund, uh, tree canopy spacing issues and/or removal of trees?
Well, Fire Safe did secure some Measure K money and that's some money that is directly resourced from San Mateo County. Um, the application was actually for roadside trees, um, near power lines. So if you have, um, a condition like that, I'm, I might, I left my name and my email address there on the table. Contact me, I do a lot of one-on-one. Um, otherwise we are focusing, um, Sneethe Lane has my attention. Um, Highway 35 through San Bruno and Pacifica has my attention. Um, the upper part of Crestmore Park with all the eucalyptus has my attention. Uh, and we are looking for large sources of money. I mean, we're talking about millions of dollars to do any of those one projects. It, it's possible, probably not all at the same time. Um, the chipper program is really a program though that is strictly for the homeowner. Uh, clearly defensible space and you might not be able to do it, you know, all in one year, but every year we're, we're trying to have this program. We've had it for many years. Um, and that would probably be your best solution for individual residential defensible
Hi, my name is Eric. I live in Portola Highlands and I noticed that that's going to be in the red zone. Now, I would disagree with that because that area, we're in the San Bruno gap. It's often wet and foggy up there. This morning before I came here, I had to squeegee off my car windows because they were so wet. And I'd say we'd never had a wildfire in San Bruno. There's not enough trees, other than the Crestmore Canyon. I don't feel that San Bruno has a ton of trees. So I would say it's getting harder and harder to live in this state. And if you push us into the high-risk fire zone, you know, $10,000 a year homeowner's insurance is a tough nut for people to swallow. So I think we may want to dial back a bit. I understand fire safety, but the areas that you mentioned where the wildfires were, that's the Sierras and Southern California, their climate is much different, their topography is different. Like I say, we're in the gap, the San Bruno gap. That's why it's wet and damp. You come up to Portola Highlands, you see lichen and moss on the roofs and on the sides of the homes where the sun doesn't hit, not only thrives because it's a wet and damp environment. I don't see where a wildfire would take off there. Plus you have the reservoir right there, which is an ample source of water if, let's say, something happened in the watershed. Otherwise my neighborhood has fewer trees. I've been up there since 86 and I can tell you with certainty, there are much fewer trees in that neighborhood than when I first moved in there. So that's my two cents and thank you.
Can I jump in on that, uh, just to respond? If, if you're talking about insurance and this kind of came up earlier, um, the determinations of the CAL FIRE hazard maps or anything are not what insurers are using to decide to charge you more or less or write you or not write you. It is based on, because, because they have had these models that are very detailed, as I showed, home by home, um, that are also specific. They take into account a lot of the same things, footprints of historic wildfires, uh, level of fuel load. So there, there's a lot of overlap, but if the CAL FIRE maps did not exist, the insurance premiums wouldn't be going down for the people that are in the areas that they have identified as high risk. And I, and I, you know, one thing about these models is they have tended to be, um, uh, proprietary and, uh, only, you know, the insurers really see the insides of them. You might want to actually register, uh, a complaint with the Department of Insurance that you think your, your community has been improperly identified by insurance companies as high risk. So it is a, a separate place to go, but that is how the specifics of insurance work. They, they're using their own. There's an 800 number for the Department of Insurance and there's also a consumer complaint, um, written process.
And again, that important distinction is that these are fire hazard severity zones. Again, hazard versus risk. The insurance carriers are using risk-based maps that they have their own, I would say, they call it the secret sauce for how they determine risk, right? And so it's very important also to know that, you know, many communities thought that they never could be affected by wildfire. I'll be straight. Oakland Hills is a perfect example. Oakland Hills has burnt down, I think, three or four times in that exact same footprint of the fire. We just here have not had the ignitions locally that, that have caused, that have got out of hand, our resources are in very close proximity, but any community in California is susceptible. I just want to keep the realism there and it's not in San Bruno, it's not every day, right? It's very specific days, hot temperatures in the summer with high winds. And the San Bruno gap, one of the things I have a feeling the reason that we have this very high is because of the San Bruno gap, as you explained, because the wind comes through there and on the wrong day with the, the wrong humidity, right? Yeah, go ahead.
As, as he speaks on that, the model is based upon the extremes of the weather. The 95th percentile, highest winds, lowest humidity, uh, all the lowest fuel moisture. So yes, currently on a day like today, that's not there. The hazard is long-term, 30 to 50-year hazards in those extreme conditions.
Two, two questions. One is, uh, there was a mention earlier of eucalyptus, wondering if there's a general policy as far as eucalyptus removal, uh, in, in, on the peninsula. We have some in our area near Hillsdale Mall. Um, also, we recently had a scenario where we had, um, arcing along our 240 lines near a tree, um, a large, a tall tree. And, uh, PG&E came out to deal with the immediate issue, but didn't, didn't seem to be any mitigation of the tree that, that seemed to be related to the issue.
I would, I would just say that each local jurisdiction has different rules and regulations that, that would dictate what you can and can't do. Um, some of those trees, the very large ones are what we call heritage trees and some jurisdictions, the county I actually know exempted, uh, large eucalyptus from the heritage tree policy at the county level in the unincorporated areas. Some jurisdictions consider them heritage trees. So it takes a different path to be able to get trees removed like that. So you'd have to check with your local jurisdiction for that specific question where you live. In San Mateo County, unincorporated San Mateo County, every jurisdiction is different. There's unincorporated and every city is different. Yes, you'd have to check with your local city where you live to determine what the policy is for them. So where do you live?
Uh, we're in San Mateo.
You're in the city of San Mateo?
That's right. Near Hillsdale Mall.
Okay. So that would be the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. So you'd have to check with them, both the city of San Mateo and the Fire Department in regards to the policy for eucalyptus trees. And, uh, yeah, she'll be able to answer your question for the in-person folks here. Okay. Yeah, let's take a couple in person.
Uh, I'm going to be real quick because the largest landowner in San Mateo County is the San Francisco PUC and we all have those big gullies. So I don't know what the partnership is there. Um, I hope it becomes improved because they seem to be a big risk here. What advice do you have for people with solar panels and electric cars? If there's a fire in our area, what can we do to help? Because we understand that that becomes more of a risk.
That's a, that's a, solar panels and electric cars. Um, I don't, I don't think, uh, I don't know, I have any specific stuff or anybody have any specific one in regards to that. It's just going to, you know, the solar panels are going to allow you to be able to work off-grid potentially, depending on the. With the exception of a structural fire, like if your house is on fire, we don't see that in a, any different way, right? We understand that the batteries are a new hazard that exist for us and we, we take those precautions when we're fighting structural fires. Okay.
Can I just add, based on the Palisades fire, I work in the solid waste industry. The homes that had the electric battery chargers or the, the, um, the batteries have become really difficult in cleanups. And I think eventually if you've got one of those in your house, we should have a record of them in our local cities so we know what you're walking into. Same with the electric cars, when they were cleaning up Palisades, again, those cars could explode on the half map. So that's another lesson learned.
I have a question and it's for the whole panel, maybe the whole audience. One of the things that bothers me is when we take short-term solutions to solve what we've got at the moment, create another one. And one of the things that's a big one for us, it's, but we, which is in fact, pushing this whole movement is that the cities have become really hot and as we take out the trees and the cover, then the cities become even bigger, hot domes of heat, heat domes. And so it's like the cat chasing its tail. I, I don't know, I mean, I have absolutely no solutions, but, but it, it does seem to me something we should consider that are we, we have to do this in the short term, but do we recognize what it's doing in the long term?
Oh, well, a lot. So many of, um, the larger scale forest health projects that are going on here, um, do have a restoration component and it's also having the right tree in the right place. So the eucalyptus, which are, you know, a lot of times get singled out, are an invasive exotic tree. Um, they Um, they crowd out, you know, all the other native trees, which are important to our ecology, to the environment and the native, you know, flora and fauna. So we try to focus on areas where we can rehabilitate, remove the exotics, and then let the natives flourish. And that seems to be working. It's a very selective process. Um, but it's very important, as you, as you said.
I was just gonna add, so we know that climate is affecting the entire state, right? So you have a lot of vegetation, doesn't matter if it's brush, timber, what have you. Lack of rain, last I understood, the Bay Area was still below the percentage of normal rain you would have here. So a lot of vegetation is getting weaker. It's dying. That allows insects to get in there. We have sections of the state that have entire bug kill that are wiped out and killed that. Bring it all together, you have vegetation is dying. That dead vegetation now becomes fuel for potential fires. So when you have that digit vegetation around your home or structures, the best thing you do is remove it as soon as possible.
Would you please explain why a pool, it could be a non-renewal, uh, insurance, homeowner's insurance policy?
Yeah, I, I think what, um, it's kind of a little bit of broad answer. Insurers wrote as many policies as they possibly could for many years. And so companies that used to have 10% of the market now have 20%. So there are more homes in each neighborhood. And now they want to not be as concentrated, right? So they are looking at things potentially that weren't their concerns in the past. And the, one of the reasons that pools are a concern is the liability issue. So it's just on there with trampolines, for example, they're just about bodily injury. And that, that's what a pool is, you know, somebody diving in and hurting themselves or drowning. So that's why, um, I, I don't know selectively, this seems to occur with pools. It's not like everybody with the pools getting non-renewed. But it seems to be one of the considerations that comes into play, and it, it's liability issue.
So a pond, a very large pond in the front of our house would be not, not an issue?
A pond would probably be less of an issue in that people probably aren't diving into it and that type of thing. Yes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Jeff. Go ahead.
Okay, great. So I, I have kind of the same question that I posed earlier. So I am trying to get my arms around and, and, and give my clients, uh, advice. Um, my understanding, and again, I'm not sure about in San Bruno, but my understanding for Central Fire is that if you are in a very high fire sensitivity zone, uh, that those municipalities are, may very well require a fire hardening, uh, inspection. But if you're in a high zone, you will not be required to do that. So, uh, that's the information I've gotten from Central County Fire. But I'm just wondering what, what your guys' take on that is, because, you know, I need to give my clients advice if they, if it comes up in one of those zones, whether they're gonna have to have these inspections done or not.
Yep. Did you hear me okay, Jeff? Did you hear me okay, Jeff?
Uh, well, yeah, just barely, but yeah.
Yep, okay. So I would just say, uh, the matrix is that in a very high, that is required, right? Yeah, the real estate disclosure actually is required in both of those. The inspection is in the very high as a minimum requirement, right? There could be a local jurisdiction requirement in that jurisdiction that could increase the inspections to different levels. But that's up to the local jurisdiction.
2.19. Hi Jeff, Civil Code 1102.19. We'll explain it further. That lines out the requirements.
What's, what is that civil code again? 1102?
Dot 19.
Dot 19, okay.
1102 dot 19. That's a civil code.
Civil code, okay. All right, great. And also why, why, all I have, when I'm here. Um, Denise, can I get your contact information? Because I'm not, I, I did check on the website real quick, but, uh, what is your last name and what's your contact information for the Fire Safe Council?
Denise?
It's, it's on our website. If you just go to firesaysamatero.org.
Okay.
That way, yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Great. We have one more online person. John, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, my question's, uh, mainly towards CAL FIRE. Um, from what I understand, you guys said the scientists team went out and gathered all this information about the hazards we have and which the state marshal then makes a recommendation to our city council. Um, that has to be mandated, correct?
That's correct. Uh, the state fire hazard severity zones that have been published or transmitted to the local jurisdiction are the minimum requirement that we have as a local agency, right? We can increase potentially the fire hazard severity zones in our local jurisdiction above and beyond that. Or we can also use what they call lines of convenience. So let's say, uh, the so zone gets cuts into a bunch of parcels, just a quarter of the parcels. We could potentially bring it down to the next street where basically, let's say, everything on the, I'm just making it up, so don't make anybody worry. Uh, everything south of Sneeve is in the very high, right? Everything north of San Bruno Avenue is in the high. I'm just making things up. But, uh, we could bring those lines of convenience down to make it easier to determine the risk zones in our local jurisdiction. So we are still in the process in San Bruno of determining that, and every local jurisdiction has that same responsibility along the way as they take those initial maps, determine what the changes, if any, are going to happen at the local level, and then implement them through council action and then ultimately transmit it to the State Board of Forestry.
So Chief, you can lower based on what your belief is of the zoning decline?
No, we cannot lower. We can increase or add, add area to those maps, but we cannot lower it. It is, it is basically what it is at a minimum. That's the bottom floor of the minimum requirement is what has been transmitted so far.
Okay, and then if that does happen, um, and I know the last time was over 10 years ago, they did this assessment. And they're expecting, from what I just heard, about 30 years assessment. Are we expected if no development happens that this is how it's going to be for 30 years?
Uh, they'll, uh, from the CAL FIRE folks here, it'll be reassessed at a, at a five-year interval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, uh.
Right here, right, no, right here, I have the microphone, ma'am. Sorry.
We'll get you next.
This is a question for CAL FIRE. I live in unincorporated Burlingame Hills. That entire neighborhood is permeated with easements that are way over ground. The County of San Mateo Department of Public Works disavows any responsibility for cleaning them out. The fire hazard is extreme. Who do we go to to get those easements cleaned?
Yeah, so, so I know you're in unincorporated Burlingame Hills, right? So not the city of Burlingame. This is a county area, and it's a county service area for fire protection there. Um, uh, and although Central County may respond to your incidents there day to day, the county itself is the local, uh, authority having jurisdiction. So the County of San Mateo, um, you said you've been in contact with Public Works? Yeah, I would say Public Works and any other person at the county, the, the Parks Department would be somebody to start with there. I can get you some contact information after, uh, we, uh, go, uh, finish the Q and A and get you some contact information for the county. I have some specific folks, uh, that we can put you in touch with.
Hi, my name is Rana. I live in the city of Belmont. I live in a high, high fire danger zone, so that's why I'm very concerned about what may happen in our neighborhood. Our street is basically an island that, that is surrounded by, uh, canyons and vegetations and tall trees. I live, uh, like, uh, within 50 feet of my house, there are three large eucalyptus trees. And I really like the one in front of my house, so I don't want necessarily, uh, for it to be taken down. But it is a real fire danger. And the same is true for like the junipers for my neighbors. Uh, the, the community was developed in this 1960s. So the vegetations have grown quite a bit. And, uh, they pose a high fire danger. I see in the brochure that you have that you have a hundred feet, uh, clearance for fire safety zone, which makes a lot of sense. But for, uh, community, communities like mine, the lot widths are less than 100 feet, so they are very small. And we already have lots of vegetation in the houses that are, um, a high risk for danger. So what is the plan? What is the proposal? How can we make our houses fire safe, considering that we live in a high fire danger zone?
Yeah, I would, uh, the lot size is an important one. They recommend the 100-foot, right? That's a, if your property is that large, you obviously only are responsible for your, up to your property lines from your home or your structures, right, for the defensible space there. And the real concept is to get your neighbors to do the same work and connecting the dots, right? So we cannot transmit fire from one property to the next and one structure to the next. And then, um, as far as, uh, any other stuff, as far as the stuff you want to talk about, Chief Carter?
Sure. I, I, I would just say, we'd, we'd always encourage, like he said, is, uh, collaboration with your neighbors. So the, working with the Fire Safe Council in the area, look at getting your neighbors into an NFPA Firewise USA community. And that would help, uh, collaboration with the neighbors to assist you in that, in the, in the vegetation in the area.
The issue is that, uh, none of the neighbors, uh, would want to spend the money to clear up. It's not just the money, it's also aesthetics. So, uh, how do you deal with that?
Yeah, so if you're in one of the very higher, high, you know, where we're gonna actually do inspections. Melinda's here from San Mateo Consolidated would be your representative here locally. She's right here with us today.
I know her. I have dealt with her before.
Great, and so in regards, if they're in the very high severity zone, they're gonna require an inspection and compliance with defensible space. That's, that's the, that's the crux of it, right?
So I just want to, sorry, last question, one, um, uh, the, the defensible space, you said it's within, if it's within the ba, property, it's the responsibility of the homeowners, right?
Correct.
But at the same time, it says here that it is the law. So if somebody is not like, uh, doing what they're supposed to do, is that a violation of the law? And is the likes, is, can any agency like enforce this requirement?
Yeah, the, your local jurisdiction, in, in, with the new fire hazard severity zone maps, the, in the very high severity zone, it's going to be a requirement for inspection and compliance, right? Uh, your local jurisdiction could potentially, and I'm not saying they do, I'm saying they could, enforce, uh, defensible space at different levels. It just determined, it's determined by the local jurisdiction. But in the very high, that would be out of compliance, and that would be a violation. Okay? All right, so just a heads up, we're gonna do about five more minutes, and then we'll call it. Uh, I know we got a, a bunch of folks with some questions, so we'll, uh, actually, you have the mic? You wanna bring it over here? Let's, let's get her real quick, and then we'll, we'll wrap it up in about five minutes. It's been a great lively discussion.
I want to thank you all for being here. Uh, I live on Fleetwood Drive, um, in San Bruno, which paralyzed, got, parallel skyline Boulevard. There is a whole line of real high power, I don't know exactly what they are, metal, very high. But then there's also a whole line of poles with transformers on them. Last year, just winter of 2024, I was out, without power for four, over four days. One of my neighbors said that he saw the, the transformer directly across the street from me blow, and then saw it daisy chain right down the row. Several years ago, I noticed, can call the part of, one of the transformers actually in full, full blaze. Is any pressure put on PG&E to better maintain or update their equipment in our areas to prevent fires?
I can take that one for sure. Um, actually, I've been in, in contact with PG&E. Uh, as of maybe three, four weeks ago, we had a meeting with their, uh, their investigators. We had two separate fires up off of, uh, was it Lake? Lake Drive, uh, uh, at the transmission lines, the San Bruno to, uh, to Hap Moon Bay Transmission Line. And also specifically in regards to some of the, the issues that you've called out. And, uh, we're, we're putting the pressure on PG&E to do, uh, increased inspections. They're, they're maintaining their inspection compliance. But, um, we had two separate fires there that were, you know, of immediate concern, obviously to me as the fire chief, uh, that were in our jurisdiction, and we've definitely got the pressure on them. And we're working to try to figure it out if there's any way we can, uh, deal with the issue of, um, vegetation that gets taken down around clearance for their lines. And that's a big project that actually I'm working with some of the council members on here locally in San Bruno.
Do we have time for one more question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I really appreciate, um, her question.
Absolutely.
Um, in, in my area, again, that John Muir area, we've had repeat transformers blow fire. Families have to evacuate, neighborhood being closed off, um, great fire department response. However, it, it was PG&E and the same transformer blowing repeatedly. So where is the risk mitigation for our neighborhood when we have repeat?
Yeah, the, the the tough part for San Bruno, we have, uh, an issue that, uh, I would say would be a planning issue back when the community was originally developed. And if you know all of the Crestmore, Rollingwood, all those neighborhoods, we have, the city owns a lot of property behind the homes. And where are the power lines? To the rear of the homes. And where are the eucalyptus trees? To the rear of the homes. So we have a confluence and really honestly, a perfect storm of things happening. And a lot of those transformer issues are, uh, eucalyptus limbs coming down on lines, you know, two or three spans down, the transformer blows over here. So I'm, I'm on, I'm on those guys, honestly. I'm bird dogging them every single chance we get. Our battalion chiefs are following up with, with PG&E. And we're, you know, we're serious about it, and we, we, uh, make, we understand your concerns because they're a concern to us. Our, it's a danger to our firefighters, it's a danger to our residents, so, thank you. Yep.
Ari, the, uh, Crestmore area, now that we're a fire, you know, a high fire zone, you said inspections. Is this something that San Bruno is going to be conducting in the near future, or is this only for people that are selling their homes that you're going to be inspecting?
So, uh, once the maps, the maps have been transmitted to us, we've made them available to the public. Uh, we will go in, within the next month or so to put them on council, uh, uh, agenda to be able to, you know, take the, uh, information in. And again, we don't have an option to not accept these maps, right? It's, it's a fate to complete, right? We can, again, adjust them, increase the size and acreage, or do lines as a convenience. Those are the two options that we have. We cannot decrease it, right? And again, I really want to make sure we differentiate the difference between hazard and risk maps, right? Hazard is, uh, knowing that, you know, it's a disclosure, just like earthquake and things like that, right? The risk is what the insurance carrier is doing different, theoretically, a different set of maps, right? I'm sure it all kind of in their world or ether, it kind of all kind of, you know, equates in there. But the reality of it is supposed to be a different set of maps that they determine their secret sauce and what the risk is, right? So we are working to stand up, uh, an inspection program in the very high zone. Uh, come after it'd be probably end of Ju- July, or June, July, um, before the, the maps actually finally get, um, adopted by the city. Absolutely, absolutely. And it can go good and bad, right? If you're compliant and you've got your stuff together, it will be beneficial to you. And it will just basically confirm what your insurance carrier is seeing. A lot of them, uh, as Joel said, they use aerial imagery to determine what the, the risk is. Uh, that will just basically confirm what they've seen. Anybody else have anything else to that?
Saying that the inspection is bad, you don't submit it to your intern.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, we're gonna wrap it up. Yep.
Oh, hi, I'm Mercedes, and I'm from Portola Highlands also, so it's very frightening when you're in the fire zone. But thanks for the panel, and I'm also a realtor. So what the guy said about your insurance company, when you do the disclosures and you have to sell that property, they are looking at everything. So thanks for the information today, and hopefully we'll have some more.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, everyone. And, uh, some of the folks will be on the periphery if you have any questions. Uh, we'd be more than happy to talk to you, uh, for a few minutes, uh, and thank you everybody for being here. All right. Hey there.
Cool. Good job, Claire. You rocked it.